You can give us those guidelines and give us the opportunity to meet you. And we can then come back to the board and do this through a conference call and present the plan and discuss that with you.
Four hundred thousand dollars is a percent of our payroll, of our office.
Yes.
Turnover in three months is going to be about two point four percent staff. It may not be a complete utter control of the business. It might be nicer for more like syrup than water.
I'm thinking of bringing the boss down. I mean, it's a hard call to score. But in a conference call, the gentleman at the other end of the line was, "There will be no more hiring."
And we know that.
Right, we know that. We want to make sure the rest of the board knows that.
Frees is hard, but they're not always hard, you know.
Playoffs.
Right.
The L word. That's not an option.
And I'm not saying that when you bring the plan that we can't then say, "Oh, okay, this looks good, so go hire people."
Well, I understand, but I will be very cautious with that, just like you're suggesting. And we have been all year in terms of the decisions, and this is really a critical position. And do we have to have this position, or can we do something a little different? Staff have juggled pace load ratios. They've really done an excellent job in coming up with different ideas of ways they can do things. So we're very cautious.
There's no reflection.
Very in survey. Oh, I know that.
But unless the board does something, spending sustained today is what it has been and will be until May 14.
But what I'm suggesting to you as a board is that you can give us an opportunity to put the plan together and then have a conference call with you. And if we have the actual number by Friday, then we can work together to make that decision.
If you're offering this plan, I don't feel a burning need to order a plan. No, I'll wait.
We're going to be looking at it really more differently. It's in our agenda, so we won't have a plan to make.
This item's been on the agenda. A discussion.
Which item?
The item about we're going to have a deficit in operations. As long as I've been on the bill.
We started at the, we went into the year.
Right.
And that's, again, that's a major reason why we really slowed down any kind of hiring or any kind of, you know, additional promotions or anything like that. And we've been very cautious about what we said.
It was still three hundred plus thousand dollars.
Yes.
With fourteen weeks left. That's twenty plus thousand dollars a week.
Yes.
Divided by five hundred and forty-three employees.
Yeah, but that means that somebody's going to take a cut. I'm not looking at that. I'm looking at not hiring people who aren't here already.
And that's, that's one of the things, one of the types of initiatives that we're I mean, you can certainly make a motion.
Yeah, I'll vote we implement a hiring freeze until we see a plan for management. Because management's been promising a plan for months.
Point of question?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to make a motion? This isn't really...
It's on the budget. It says, "And budget and reallocations." So I'm reallocating payroll.
Okay. So you need to make a motion so that you hit the item.
Then we have a hiring freeze so that we reallocate unused payroll money. I second that.
Could you read back the motion, please?
Mr. Patrick made a motion to...
Reallocate payroll money.
Reallocate.
Basically by not hiring people.
Unused payroll.
Right, unused payroll money.
This allocator is located.
Until we have our plan. Is that fair enough?
I second the change.
I guess I'm wanting to put a little heat on the issue.
On the...
On mine.
No. No. Thank you. I think the gentleman in the yellow shirt, I cannot remember his name, I think he had a question for you. Did you have a question?
Yeah. Perhaps a question in my statement. At this point, you know, to really, well, let me ask Carol. Have hiring been done, don't you know all the channels?
No.
So you're the ultimate one that's responsible?
Well, the senior management team makes that decision.
In a department by your staff without your knowledge?
No, it cannot happen.
And you don't need to tie Carol's hands by having a no hiring policy. Carol's executive director, hired her for a reason. She knows what the situation is. She said tomorrow they're going to be going to review, review the plan that's going to deal with partially with salaries and personnel. With the turnovers that they've had here, there are some needs for personnel replacement in order for the organization to function efficiently properly. Why would you want to restrict her ability to do that? If you have the confidence, or you don't have the confidence? She said, "We'll review this tomorrow." I don't think that's, I don't think it's fair.
Well, how long will it take you to get a plan?
Hopefully a couple of days.
We can stand, we can handle a hiring freeze that long.
I'm not going to hire her tomorrow. We're probably not.
Carol, I will accept that job that you're offering.
Tomorrow, with Mary.
Are you done? Thank you. Carol, we have to report to the new advisor.
Can you go get my memo from the summary?
Yes, thank you.
I will just highlight a few little things from it and a couple of things that I didn't include. One important bit of information, one of the things that's very helpful to the VAC meetings and the meeting, information that's presented from regional center, it's important for the vendors to know. And it was very helpful that we heard about the Medicaid integrity notification mass mailing and the disclosure form that's now required that's gone out to all the vendors. And it's kind of a complicated form to collect, so it was very helpful to have somebody from regional center tell us about that, let us know what was coming. And that is something that will have to be filled out by the vendors now and then probably in about two years again. For the membership committee, we do have some vacancies coming up. And one thing I wanted to kind of remind you about is that with the VAC, we've kind of created all on an annual basis so that beginning in July, we start the year again for the VAC. So the current members who are eligible for extended time will have to be reauthorized here at the board meeting. And we do have some vacancies to fill. We're looking for a new membership committee chair. We will need a new co-chair, a new secretary. We have a current opening that we're just about to fill, I think, for the insurance program that will just be for the remainder of that time and then have to be reauthorized for the rest of the year. We have another vacancy in Respite. So just wanted to kind of give you the heads up to expect that, that that will be coming up for both adding new people to the VAC and reauthorizing everyone else that's eligible to continue for another term. We also had a presentation about the joint task force that worked on the P and I guideline, and that was very helpful. That had members of the vendor community, particularly residential vendors, and regional center staff working together, you know, look at some problems and come up with some solutions. So that was very helpful. Sandra also told us she was leaving us as our recording secretary. We hope she couldn't go, but so she's staying on a little bit longer. But we will have Kobe Carver, is that how it's pronounced? Who will be taking over. And we appreciate everything Sandra's done for us for all these years. Probably the greatest concern that came up, and it came across categories, and also in the public input as well, was about the authorization process, continuing concerns about unfilled vacancies, continuing concerns about the budget. So those were concerns, and I think the vendors in particular want to make sure that they feel that referral process is transparent and fair. So that did come out a couple of times during the meeting. As we've mentioned before, a lot of the vendors are really on edge. They're really having to do with a lot less and do a lot more. So it can be just one new additional issue that can be, really put them on the brink. For transportation, the cost of gas, for example. And one of the things that is an ongoing concern, particularly for the smaller and mid-sized vendors, is again the cost of the audit. So a question was raised if there was a way to, in special circumstances, delay the due date for the audit, because there are vendors out there that frankly can't afford it right now. And it's not a small cost for them. The residential vendors will be combining their meetings, levels two and three and level four will, for the most part, starting not to cross anything that goes in there, join together and have their meetings together. They have a lot of common concerns, so I think that collaboration will be very helpful. But the next residential vendor meeting will include representatives from the behavior mod programs. And that's another example of how the different vendors are coming together to discuss common concerns and try and forge solutions to problems. So that will be the next level four residential meeting. Both residential's levels two and three and four have come together and formulated a request for a new task force, kind of in the same way that the P and I task force looked at some of those issues. They wanted, again, to have members of regional center staff and members of the residential vendors come together and look at vacancy issues and the referral process. So that request has been forwarded on. Our legislative committee is moving forward, and they have reached out to other regional centers, and obviously the things in the law that impact us and impact everyone throughout the state. And I was able to send out an email through the, just one more acronym, this one is not New York. No, I'm sorry. The CAS ACC is the California Service Advisory Committee Chair. And that is a fairly new organization. It started in January and allows all of the VAC chairs to come together once a month in a conference call and share information. And you can also put up things on email on the lister. And I did put up notice that our new legislative committee was looking for input from other regional centers, and we started to have a very good response from that. So it does give us a way to reach out for issues that are more than just our area, that impact the entire state. That's my summary. What questions do you have?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Peter.
The audit, is that our requirement or state requirement?
State.
Okay. Vendors are, so they're contacting their...
It's part of the trailer bill. It's a state requirement for all vendors over under fifty thousand.
So I understand that we cannot law.
Correct.
Okay. But can we help the vendors contact their assembly people and their state senators? Because we can't do much for them if the law says we have to do it unless we break the law.
That's true. It's a requirement.
Right. So would that behoove us to invest an hour and just kind of a sample letter, send it out if you're interested?
Number one.
Are they encouraged to do that?
The vendors are, yes.
Okay. Next question. And I believe it's been in here before about the vacancy rate?
Yes.
Is that because we have people who aren't living homeless or living in Latterman or something and they're not being moved into a home? Or do we just have more openings than we have consumers as well?
My understanding is that second thing, we have more openings than we have consumers that feel like struggling. And I think one of the factors at work right now is perhaps there are more consumers staying at home longer rather than going into residential homes.
Make sense.
Partly because of the current budget situation. So I've heard that as a partial explanation of the time. And that's very difficult.
Yeah.
In terms of the audit, there's nothing in the law that specifies a date. That's an arbitrary number that inland regional has said, I think Carol was getting six, within six months?
Within six months of the close of that vendor's fiscal year.
Right. It can be extended, doesn't have to be six months. That's something that folks decide on and then break with. Second thing, in terms of, there are new centers, they're much, much lower than the two of eleven, twelve percent, not forty percent. And one of the ways that they do it, and there's a number of ways, and I haven't really done all the research, so I don't know, you know, everything encompasses it. But they vendorize as they need. So licensing gives them licenses, but certain centers only vendorize as they have a need for. So they don't have a need for homeless for level two and three, they don't have their license, they do not have any lease. Now, what that does, it supports the back community to get in business or to serving consumers for, I don't know, I think twenty, thirty, forty years. It's not fair for those people to suffer or to be regulated or just be thrown into the pot. Whoever gets it, gets it. It's going to take some more research to really find to that information, but basically that's the kind of information that we need.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next question. Thank you.
Tom, did you have a question as well?
No.
That's all right. I'm going to hold it. So we're going to move on to consumer advisory.
You mean, Carol, yes? My name is Steven Miller. I am the liaison to Consumer Advisory Committee. As we celebrate the fortieth anniversary, I would like to give gratitude to all those who actually started the regional center back in nineteen seventy-one and all those we honor today and all the hard work and gave where we're at today. So I want to give gratitude to that. Especially for the people with developmental disabilities. Me living with one, I know the challenges it goes through, so, you know, I commend all you guys and all the services you provide for these people and really be a great advocate for every person that we provide services to. Not just here, but statewide, about two hundred and fifty-five thousand people. So I really commend. As far as the CAC, we just finished our second annual IRC dating show, was a complete success on the twenty-third of February. We are continuing to network the day programs, Advocates and I, and as CAC members to really get the word out, to help people, you know, express their concerns with us by getting to join our CAC meetings and really be a part of the community. We are also in a process of still visiting our senior companions twice a month. That's going very well as well. We continue to be part of the Healthy Bodies, Healthy Lives, which happens every other month. My lives by choice, trainings like leadership through personal change, feeling safe, being safe. We are continuing to participate in the IRC orientation and this process. We are also continuing to, Advocates and I, I think, also not only been going to the day program, but we've been continuing to verify a couple of meetings as well, to see how the CAC of IRC could actually benefit them on a change they want to do in their community in both counts. We are continuing to provide outreach out in the community, educate our community about people with developmental disabilities and what does IRC do and to live and act as they say. A lot of people don't know what the regional center system is. We still continue to do that by educating the community. But more importantly, working for CI Two, me and Advocates, continue to really help celebrate the fortieth year. And we would like to thank you all for all your support with the CAC and the people we provide services to, about forty-six thousand. And we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Do you have any office news? For our new business, I have a recommendation I can make in terms of potential board member. And the person, Miss Christine Benjamin, Christine has lots of experience in terms of volunteer services, which is currently working with Habitat and some other volunteer issues that I've forgotten. But anyway, I'd like to recommend Christine as a member of the board.
You need to have someone also make a recommendation.
The medical is making.
I'd like to recommend Christine as a member of the board.
I'll second. Okay, I'll throw a reason.
Question, I'm sorry, the question is, no, other favor? Hi. I feel like I have a little bit of... Opposed? Motion count.
There's no tie for you to break. There's no tie for you to break.
So we would like to officially welcome, would you come and join us? Christine Benjamin? Want to sit there or not? It is because Africa's against Christmas. Can you share with us some of your experiences?
My name is Christine Benjamin. I was a commissioner with the city of San Bernardino for the Human Relations Unit, and I am now volunteering with Habitat for Humanity. I'm working for them. I also work with a radio station as their media specialist. And I'm a mother of three, wife. I have a family member, I have a family member that is disabled, and I also have, I take care of my mother and my grandmother.
Okay, so our next issue in terms of our new business will be board meeting frequency. So that's focused on the expectation and the gesture. And I know you kind of concerned about...
Well, the board meets every other month. The process seems to be a little on the slow side, and it doesn't really allow the board, in my opinion, a lot of time to provide the direction that really the executive director, I believe, needs. And we only meet every other month for a company that's doing, what, about a half a billion dollars, Joe?
Quarter.
Quarter billion dollars. That's a lot of money, a lot of services, a lot of people show up with concerns, and there's not anything we can do for two more months. It just seems like a long time. I have no desire to come any more than anybody else does. But I think an organization that's reached this maturity needs to meet more often than six months.
You know, I'm as lazy as anybody on the board, I'll guarantee it. I know you'd be, but for the while, until we're comfortably off probation, until we do the fiscal year, I think, you know, it's possible to meet too often, it's possible to give boards or executive staff too much direction, but for the nonce, I think it might be safer to meet once a month for a while. I'd love to not do it forever. I don't want to compete our ability to get a forum, but it's doubtful for April and June for various reasons. I'm a guaranteed no for June. Yeah. But I concede that Tom and Henry's point is right. So I guess I'm advocating a meeting in April. I'm a conservative with this issue.
I think the board needs to meet more than one time. I think six meetings is not enough meetings. I personally go with no, no, and no on every month.
How is?
I've been thinking that, why can't we meet two times in those months we're supposed to meet?
Can you say it?
It's still every other, it says two times.
In the same month? The same month. Well, the other thing...
I could meet on Saturdays and we're assigned.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you owe a hell of a...
Is your breakfast fine?
I'd be happy to. I'm serious. The thing for me is coming here. Okay, I'm a person who looks up at four o'clock every morning. On the next, we have important things that go on and on. I'm not a happy person because I know it's the way we meet my month. I have serious responsibilities, and it is not that I will not come, because if you guys decide every month, if the next ends, well, I'll come. I'll run, I'll fight, I'll go. One of the names in that conference call, Carol and whatever. The state, the state was pretty crystal clear. Did they believe that the board didn't take a more active role? Was that a fair statement here?
I think so.
This is kind of a condition of overcoming the probation.
They didn't say that, but I think it wouldn't hurt.
No idea. One of the things that PBS has really been pounding into our heads is that the contract is with the board, not with IRC. So we're the board, so we have to make some decisions. Some conversations that maybe we don't like, or do some things that we don't want to do, it's our responsibility. And they continually tell us it's our responsibility. So, you got to step up?
I agree that we need to meet more often, simply as part of probation. Because of the amount of money that we're now making decisions for and our responsibility, it is ours. But I don't think twice a month would give staff enough time to prepare to have us meet. It does take a while to prepare, you know... It does take a while to prepare, you know. Everybody's laughing at her, at her antics, not yours. With that, I would like to make a motion that we do meet monthly until the board decides not to.
Also, I'm glad. Is the motion in second, that we meet monthly until the board decides that we no longer need to meet? Question. How about comment? Comments? Comments? Okay, I, I say it, and I mean it. If that's the decision of the board, I would go along with that, of course. But I simply say like, okay. On the months that we're not all, you know, doing what we're supposed to do according to the calendar, we can start and go to Patrick's house, then we can go to Tom's house.
And you know, Carmella's house.
Happy to have you, but all of these people couldn't work on a little public that guy. And have to hire a bus to bring them in.
I think it just continues to be second Monday.
Any other comments or questions?
Um, for me, it's not convenient, but I like every, every other month. If we're just going to meet just to give direction, I could be a pretty good team, a director and the employees of the regionals to carry out. Because if we're going to, if we're going to be really looking and trying to give guidance of everything, and just looking at the budget, among the size of the budget, and having to look through every policy, I mean, that's going to take, that takes a lot of paperwork. That takes a lot for them to be, for us to be reviewing a lot of, you know, and that's why, that's why they're, that's why we're a board and they're the employees. You know, I, I don't think that we have to meet just to give guidance. It's not a, it's not that much of any, that's not our expertise. That's not our area to, we're going to be, we're not employees. So we don't see, we're not going to see all that kind of, all the little stuff, everything that they have to go through and all the paperwork that they have to do. Because that's, that's not, that's not our position. You know, just to meet, just to, just to meet, just to meet. I don't know. I don't see, I don't see a purpose in it. I, I think that if we need every other month, and then ask the questions when we need as a board, then, or call them up and let them know that this is what a concern we have because we read our board packet ahead of time. So we're asking all the questions, we call them up, and ask Carol about certain questions that we're going to need answers to when we come to the board. Then they'll have them all ready for us, or they have them mailed to us.
I personally would rather be involved more with, say, email and our conference call communication, because I mean, half the time I'm spending driving.
Yes, I do.
And Carmella a lot more.
I'm not kidding.
No, I have to kind of sign off. We have, we have the motion on the table. I think we have to be real serious about it until we decide not to meet monthly. I think that has to remain real open if things, if we're willing to have a nice budget year and life is quasi better and the department becomes more comfortable with this. Because, yeah, the drive from life is brutal. The drive from Palm Springs is no bargain, and 4:00 AM is coming up with blinding speed. I, if we're going to meet every month, we need to meet, try to meet fast. I mean, at least, look for that 4:00 AM.
I have a question. If we're going to have the meeting once a month, is it going to be a full meeting? Could we have, like, just certain issues sometimes or have executive board meetings?
Meetings. I think the board, that's a meeting, bullet meeting is where they're not having tonight.
Yeah, in January, we decided to have a meeting in February. So we could decide in March whether you want a meeting in April. We could decide in, in May whether we want a meeting in June. I perceive that one.
And, and the meeting that you had in February was a single topic issue?
Yeah.
And, and if there's single topics that you feel you want to discuss and want to get up to the bottom of and do, do it that way, you can certainly do that. I mean, that would, that would be another approach. The, the other approach you could use is every other month we had regular board meetings. And on those off months, maybe there were committees that you wanted to put into place that could meet as a smaller group, like a business committee or a program services committee or a case management committee, whatever you may need to wrestle with from more of a policy directional kind of discussion than some of the things that.
Yeah, whenever he's more than a.
The mid-range, because you don't really need to be involved in that. You need to give us the, the policy part of that.
I'm a little confused. Isn't it great that we're in kind of a crisis mode? We have a serious problem with a deficit of $400,000. And I'm hearing board members saying, geez, you know, long drive, I don't know how to do this. Has anyone explained to the board before they took on the responsibility of a board member even after crisis? If you ran this like a corporation, you'd be meeting every week on this crisis. The gentleman is 100% right. You need to meet every month until you solve your problem. This is a major problem. This is not like, do we buy an extra bus? You don't have to have a public meeting every, every month. You might just continue with your, the way it is now. But that second meeting on that, that other month, you guys got to solve this problem. This is why you're here. Very confusing. I don't, I don't understand when you weigh responsibility versus.
Thank you.
I call for a question.
I didn't hear what you said, I was.
Okay, I call for a question, which means I, I'm requesting the vote or let it die.
Okay, so I'm asking, if you read the, the motion.
Motion, motion. Motion made to meet monthly until the board decides not to.
Okay, that was, that was second. So we're going to go now. I'm a member of the meeting, that's it, the board decides not to, please raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Two weeks. Okay, so, all opposed?
No, no, I'm not. I thought.
Two, two opposed?
So if the motion passed, we will meet monthly until it's decided by the board that we will no longer need to meet.
And the second, Monday is the one.
Saturday.
Same time?
That's the same time.
Since we don't have a place for the board members, we can't go on. I had a couple of quick questions, but I promised to. I will be left in that. We got a letter from somebody called the Spanish parent support group. Is staff going to be responsible for that since it can't be ruled? And would it be possible, since the nice lady brought up that we might be in violation of some welfare and institution code, at the next board meeting, to get a status on if we're hooked on all the well items? Since that's, okay.
Thank you.
Brilliant.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm ready. Is it Jerry? Have a wonderful.